Welcome to all of you in good morning, English at time. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this morning is Pastor Debbie Garrett, delivering the mysteries to provide our invitation. Following that invitation, we will pledge allegiance. I invite you to stand for both. Stand for Debbie.
Good morning. Father God, we call upon you this morning to say thank you for watching over each and every one of us, allowing us to arise out of the fold and have a right mind and be straight on. Father, we invite you to our meeting place today to serve your love and peace among us. Father, today we lift up to you our mayor Lily Wu and the city council leaders of Wichita. It is our prayer that they work together with all integrity and transparency as they serve the community that they represent. Father, search their hearts and remove everything that finds that's not their spirit so that they may effectively serve the city, bless and protect their families from all evil. Father, we lift up to you our police chief Josephus Sullivan and his family, our police officers, firefighters, and other frontline workers and their families as they put their own lives on the line to help keep our city safe. Remember the hurricane victims of Helene and those in the pathway of Hurricane Milton. Now let us not forget which of those children call them, those struggling with mental challenges and the homeless in our community who struggle with all these things we ask of Jesus and mighty name we pray.
President of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Garrett. Councilmember Dalton Glasscock wanted to be here today. Unfortunately, he had a flight canceled, delayed from Europe, so he is en route right now, so he will not be able to join us this morning, so it will be the six of us on the council this morning. Do we have, sorry, city clerk, could you please tell us the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 1st, 2024.
Do we have any changes to the minutes? I see none. I approve, I motion to approve the minutes for the October 1st, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Today's proclamations are the Wichita Asian Festival Day, Toastmasters International Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Fire Prevention Week. The awards are Purchasing Achievement of Excellence Award, followed by a special USD 259 presentation.
May please ask the Wichita Asian Festival representatives to all come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas volunteers of the Wichita Asian Association have selected Saturday, October 12th, 2024, to promote awareness of Asian cultures and heritage with the residents of Wichita and surrounding areas. Whereas the Wichita Asian Festival celebrates the diversity of the residents of Wichita and cultural backgrounds from the continent of Asia. Whereas this is the 43rd annual Wichita Asian Festival presented by Evergi and Spirit Aero Systems. Whereas the Wichita Asian Festival is a community event organized to foster understanding and appreciation of Asian cultures through culinary and performing arts, along with the Miss Wichita Asian Festival Scholarship Pageant. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 12th, 2024, as Wichita Asian Festival Day in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to participate in this exciting event at Century 2 Convention Hall in downtown Wichita."
Good morning, council members. Good morning, Mayor Wu. Good morning, everyone. I'm the president for Wichita Asian Association for this year. My name is Sanali Gudlikar. We are very, very excited to celebrate 43rd year of Wichita Asian Festival. This is a festival solely represent the Asian culture and like Mayor Wu mentioned, honor and highlight the Asian culinary and performing arts. So it's a pleasant welcome and invite from all of us to all of you. We have more than 55 vendors representing the Asian food, art, and culture, 20 cultural performances, so not to forget Saturday, October 12th, at Century 2 from 5:00 to 9:30 PM. I hope to see you and have a wonderful day. Thank you.
The festival is organized and presented by 100% volunteers, so these are all individuals that just care about providing the cultural richness that Wichita represents, and I'm really grateful to have served as the past president of the Wichita Asian Association. So thank you very much for continuing this tradition for 43 years. May please ask the Toastmasters International Group to please come forward at this time. We will move to the Native American Community Resource Coalition at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, recognizing that Wichita is built upon the homeland and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region. Whereas historically, the city has embraced local indigenous peoples' culture, particularly the work of Kiowa Comanche artist Black Bear Bozen, whose Keeper of the Plains is not only part of our city skyline, but a prominent symbol of our city. Whereas the city values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character and landscape of the city of Wichita. Whereas the city of Wichita encourages businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, which shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land, and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that indigenous nations add to our city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to celebrate and recognize the well-being and understanding of the contributions of our indigenous communities."
Good morning. My name is Ben Eaglefeather with the Native American Community Resource Coalition. I am Lakota Sioux and a descendant of survivors of the Native American boarding school era. I stand here today, not just as an individual, but as a representative of those who came before me, my ancestors, who survived the hardships of forced assimilation and colonization, and also those who continue to walk this path of healing and empowerment. Today is a day of profound significance. It is not only a day to honor the rich histories, cultures, and contributions of indigenous people, but also a time to remember the painful legacy of colonization, displacement, and erasure that native people have endured for generations. For many of us, the wounds of the boarding school era and forced assimilation are still felt, passed down through our families and communities. I carry this history with me every day. It is not just a story from the past, it is a part of who we are as indigenous people today. As a descendant of survivors of these policies, I understand the lasting impact that they have had on our culture, our identities, and our ability to heal. But today is also a day of resilience and remembrance. We remember not just the suffering, but the strength, wisdom, and love that has carried us through. We remember the survival of our languages, our traditions, and the very essence of who we are. The trauma our ancestors faced has shaped our communities, but so too has their courage and strength. We are here today because of their unwavering determination to survive, to protect our culture, and to ensure that future generations know the truth of what happened. In our community, we are working to reclaim and rebuild. Through local events, indigenous organizations, and traditional practices, we are finding ways to heal and uplift each other, one step at a time. These initiatives show that we are more than our pain, we are a people of profound strength and vision. The work we do today is for the next seven generations, so our children's children can have better lives. As we move forward, let us remember that healing is not just for indigenous people, it is a collective effort. We all have a role to play in building a future where the scars of the past no longer define us, but instead fuel our vision for a more just, inclusive, and compassionate world. I am deeply honored to receive this proclamation from Mayor Wu and the Wichita City Council here today, as it reflects the recognition of indigenous history and the need for reconciliation. But more than anything, it is a call to action, a reminder that we must continue to advocate for our people, to educate, and to heal.
May please ask the Wichita Fire Department to please come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the city of Wichita is committed to ensuring all residents and visitors safety and security. Fire is a significant public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with homes as the places where people are at greatest risk. Whereas working smoke alarms reduce the risk of dying in a home fire by nearly half. Smoke alarms detect smoke before it becomes dangerous, giving you precious time to escape, and in some cases as little as two minutes. To ensure the highest level of safety, residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each sleeping area and on every level of the home. Whereas smoke alarms should meet the specific needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Testing smoke alarms at least once a month and having a well-practiced home fire escape plan is crucial. Whereas Wichita's bravest are dedicated to reducing the number of home fires and related injuries through fire prevention and education efforts. The theme of the 2024 Fire Prevention Week is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," reminds us of the importance of maintaining working smoke alarms in every home. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Wichita, and urge all residents to ensure their homes are equipped with working smoke alarms to support the many public safety initiatives of the Wichita Fire Department."
Thank you, Mayor Wu, City Council. I'm Chris Dugan, I'm the Fire Marshal of the Wichita Fire Department. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone how important a working smoke alarm in every sleeping room and every level of every home is to making it out of a structured fire safely. I would also like to invite everyone out to our events throughout the week. We'll be at Cedric County Zoo later today, YMCA tomorrow, and then this Saturday, we're hosting open houses at all of our local fire stations. So please come out, bring the family, and enjoy a beautiful Saturday with us, and we hope to see everyone there.
May please ask the City of Wichita's Purchasing Department to come forward at this time. This is a special award. The Finance Department has been awarded the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement from the National Procurement Institute. This award demonstrates a commitment to procurement excellence. It recognizes organizations that embrace innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. It's reflective of staff that work hard every day to provide excellent service to the organization. This is the 23rd year that the Finance Department has earned this award. For 2024, there were 198 successful applicants, including 72 cities. Of the 198 2024 award recipients, only three are awarded from the state of Kansas. Please join me in congratulating the Purchasing Division of the Finance Department at the City of Wichita.
Thank you to management and city council for their continued investment and support in our mission to obtain the greatest value for each dollar spent by the City of Wichita in the procurement of goods and services efficiently and effectively while ensuring fairness and integrity to the accordance of law and regulations. Our purchasing team comprises of dedicated supply chain professionals, but most importantly, they're public servants working on behalf of the city's citizens and taxpayers utilizing their respective talents. This award demonstrates the continued investment in our staff and the ability to continue professional development and education. The annual conferences, networking events, community outreach, all help us to innovate and build trust with our customers. I am honored to work with all of you in the purchasing division every day, and I challenge anyone, anyone in a purchasing division to find a better staff. Lastly, for the public every week, the purchasing division presents our recommendations to the city council for consideration. What you may not know or was easily seen is what makes my presentation a few short minutes, represents extensive staff time and effort that collectively with our requesting department comprises our final project recommendations. This work would not be possible without my purchasing staff, without Jason Brogdon, LeAnn Hendricks, Val Fallow, Tracy Jordan, Rachel Carroll, Treble Nima, Kyle Beckstrom, and Chris Hazlitt couldn't be with us today. I see you, we all see you, thank you.
High school graduate. Some of those are academic assets, so 21-year higher on your ACT, a certain SAT score, college credit, those sorts of things. Some of them are non-academic, so the idea being that we know that students need a diploma to be successful in life, but they really need more than just a diploma. A lot of times, a diploma isn't enough to really prepare students to be successful after high school. So they talk about it in terms of two sheets of paper, you need your diploma and you need something else. So that something else could be an academic something else, like college credit, or it could be a credential, like a CNA, EMT certification, something like that. Also, things like work-based learning, internships, even things that are based in the community, like an Eagle Scout, those count as post-secondary assets. So we're in the process, our current freshman class is the first year, is that right? Current freshman class will be the first year that this counts towards our graduation rate, so class of 28. And so we're in the process of creating the infrastructure to have all these opportunities for kids, but you know, our vision statement for the district talks about our students growing and learning within the community, and part of them being ready for life outside of high school happens within the greater Wichita community. And then our goal is for 90% of our students to feel safe and connected at their school. School safety has been part of strategic plan for a number of years. We know that when students feel like they belong, their outcomes are better, they show up to school better, their attendance is better, their grades are better. So we try to create a sense of belonging in each and every one of our schools, and ultimately, I think that's part of what I've said about our city too, right? We want to create a city where all of our students feel like they belong, they can graduate from high school, and they can stay here because they feel like they're a part of the fabric of our community. So those were quick highlights. The other thing that I shared with you that I didn't put on any of the slides was our Facility Master Plan. So as you know, there's a bond vote that will be happening in February, and as you have questions about schools, I think every one of your districts are impacted. have questions about schools, I think every one of your districts are impacted in some way, shape, or form by that plan. So if you have questions about this school or that school, whether to rebuild, you know, moving to a K-8 model, we're doing an early childhood center at the Chester Lewis campus close to 11th and Hillside, or 17th and Hillside, a Future Ready Center for Building Trades. So I wanted you to be armed with that information. We'll get that to you electronically too, if you want to send it out to constituents. And we're just now kind of ramping up our educational campaign, telling everybody all about that plan. So I also brought a whole bunch of my team here, so these are a lot of our district folks who, it was cool to see your procurement folks get recognized because it's so true, you know, these agendas happen and, you know, they come to you guys and you get to take action and vote, but hours and hours of work happen behind the scenes to make it all go, and that's what these guys do for our public school district. So with that, I'll stand for any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Kelly Pilefeld. We'll start with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kelly, for the presentation. I'd also like to just extend my appreciation for you guys working with us on Park Elementary. That's going to be a great asset to our community. Unfortunately, there will be a number of your own students who are impacted by some of the things that go on at Park Elementary. So thank you for your awareness on that one and working with us on some of the other buildings around the district. I look forward to seeing how that ends up, and again, I think it'll be for the benefit of the neighborhoods and the community as a whole. I'd also just like to say one more thing, so working with emergency services, the Police Department, our sheriff, for some of the school safety concerns that we have, because quite frankly, some of the things you see on the news are the things that keep us awake at night, probably the number one issue, the number one fear that we have. So I know we still are working on some aspects of the school safety plans and working together, so I do appreciate you guys, all your action on that front as well. I look forward to seeing how it all shakes out, and I'm glad to have a great partner in the school district and yourself and everybody that works for USD 259 to make Wichita as strong as it possibly can be.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you all being here and all the awesome work that you all do for our young people. Really appreciate this. I've been getting questions about it too, so I can use this to answer those. I just had one question for you. There is a right and wrong answer. So would you agree that Northeast Magnet is the best high school in the City of Wichita? Hey, Northeast is greatness.
I do like to celebrate the great leaders that we have produced over the years in Wichita Public Schools. I do like to celebrate that. Is that fair?
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. And Kelly, thank you for all the great work your team and your staff does. You know, my son's a principal, and so I hear a lot of the great things that you're doing, team is doing, and so very much appreciate it, not always in the easiest situations. So just thank you for doing a great job.
Yeah, well, thanks.
And to all your team. Thank you.
They're amazing.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question that, and we can have another conversation another time, but when I'm glancing down at the school closures, they all happen to be in District 6 and in the core. How can I reassure my constituents, these are all neighborhood schools, all of our schools are incredibly important, but how do I make them not freak out? Like, I mean, it's very scary. I know it's going to happen over a period of time, but it looks like a targeted area, and I know that's not the case, but how can I reassure them that it's going to be okay? And, you know, this is all about our kids, and it's just a lot of changes, a lot of changes. Yeah, I just, I'm getting lots and lots of questions that I don't necessarily know all the answers to, but I would like to reassure them that everything is going to be okay.
Yeah, yeah. So a couple things, and I'd be happy to engage even on a community level, right, with some of your folks. You know, the data is based, or the plan is based on data, right? So we have a map, I didn't share that with you, but it's on the website, a kind of a heat map of where students live in the district and where they're projected to live as far as the demographics go. And so what we're trying to do is put the schools in the places where the kids are. And if you look at the map of the district and that specific quadrant from, you know, maybe Broadway to West Street, you know, 29th, South Kellogg, in that area, when that expanded, you know, and my wife was one of those, my in-laws still live in that neighborhood, my wife was one of those people that, when that expanded in the 70s and 80s, lots and lots of kids, right? So we built schools for kids, almost a school every square mile. I mean, not exactly, but, so there's a high density of schools in that area and a lower density of kids than there used to be. So with the plan, what we ideally like to do is be able to build a newer, a new school, and not necessarily exactly combine two schools, but think of Black Elementary and OK Elementary. They're not, you know, maybe four blocks away from each other, and both have, you know, on the lower end of enrollment for our schools. So build a new school at Black Elementary, and those students can all go to that school. So although the transition's hard and the change is hard, the idea of having something maybe better to move into than the decisions we had to make last spring, we weren't able to offer that in the same way. So that's a piece of it, but each part of, you know, each line on that plan kind of has a story, you know what I mean? So Loweture and Irving has a story, and Cessna being a K-8 has a story, and, you know, rebuilding Truesdale. Each of those are, you know, it's not a complicated plan, but, you know, there is detail that has to be dug into for each of those things. So, yeah, we would welcome any kind of engagement or any kind of discussion to talk about it and to answer any questions, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I will be in touch.
Okay, perfect.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I couldn't miss the opportunity to pile on. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all that you do. I started my career as a school counselor, and so I have deep appreciation for everything that you do in education. I'm also a huge advocate for early learning and making sure that we get our kids prepared for pre-K and K. The number one predictor of adult incarceration is third grade literacy. The number one predictor of adult health is third grade literacy. So everything that we can do to partner with you to make sure that our kids get a great education really not only improves their entire life outcome, but our community. The other thing I want to point out, yesterday I was at Rotary presenting on early learning, and some of your staff were there for Riff Reading Days. They did a fantastic job. Just like to put in a shameless plug that December 17th and 18th is Riff Reading Day. I do this every year. I love it, and we'll plan to get scheduled, but encourage the community to also check it out. Thank you.
Very good. And I would mention, so November 14th, we're going to have a new event that we've not done before, from 3 to 7 o'clock, it's a literacy summit. And so we're bringing together community partners, teachers, advocates, elected officials, so I'll get the information to you all about that. And we'll have a couple different, you know, we'll have a data walk, and we'll have a panel discussion on a couple things, because as you probably know, you know, we do a lot of great things in the district, but our kids have significant barriers. You know, the demographics of our school district don't necessarily mirror the demographics of our city. We're more diverse, we're more impoverished, some of those sorts of things. So our kids have significant barriers, and community partners like Rotary and United Way and YMCA are vital to helping our kids meet their goals.
Thank you for being here today.
Kelly, I had a couple questions. First and foremost, I wanted to hear about what you just talked about, which was a lot of your students are impoverished. Can you talk about free and reduced lunches? How many are under that poverty line? And what type of barriers does that, or challenges does that pose to the district?
Yeah, I think our latest number this year is we just ticked right up above 80%. So that's, you know, four out of every five of our students is on a free and reduced lunch plan. I think there's some obvious things that come with that that are particular to school. So, you know, transportation's one, you know, we bus kids if they're a certain distance from the school, but a lot of times, kids are trying to, and families are trying to walk to school, and families may only have one car or no car at some point. You know, food and hunger can be an issue sometimes, too. We provide a universal free breakfast for all students regardless of their poverty level. So my own students will eat cereal in the morning, and they go to school and eat another breakfast after they get there. So universal free breakfast is a fantastic thing we've done. But working with, you know, Kansas Food Bank and that, and the backpacks over the weekends and all those sorts of things help too. Basic needs, you know, clothes, you know, we mentioned, you know, I'm glad, Mike mentioned the Park Elementary, because at any point in time, we have about 400 to 600 students who are considered homeless in the district, which is a large amount of students, you know. So the poverty is an issue, and then when you layer on other pieces of that, a student has a disability, student doesn't, you know, is not a native English speaker, student is experiencing homelessness, you know, those sorts of things, just create more and more challenges for kids. Most of the time, school is a preferred place to be, especially for our little kids, right? They love being at school, it's safe and clean, and people love them. And so we love working with our parents in order to meet the best, you know, the needs of kids and do the best we can by all of them. But it does come with challenges, there's no doubt.
And last but not least, I'm a proud product of Wichita Public Schools, and I'm just really grateful to all the instructors that helped me as a first-generation immigrant and American to learn English. So I'm really grateful to the programs that USD 259 offers. I came here when I was eight years old, and I did not speak English. So I really do appreciate the services that Wichita Public Schools provided me and my brother. So my question now is really about retention of talent. You mentioned 2,700 students graduate from USD 259 each year. How can we keep and retain these talented individuals that you graduate, but how can we also attract families to choose to come to Wichita?
Yeah, two great questions. Some of what we're trying to do with the Future Ready Center model is to embed that work-based learning. There is good research that shows that a student that has an experience with an employer earlier on, before graduation, is more likely to consider that employer after graduation, right? So I go into her Cargill, or I go into her Textron, or whatever, and I think, oh yeah, I remember that, that could be an option for me later. Working with the business community is key for us as far as aligning what it is we're teaching and what it is we're trying to do for kids with what they want, right, and what those skills that they have for the future. So Future Ready Center for Aviation Manufacturing, Future Ready Center for Healthcare are really doing that to get kids ready for entry-level jobs here in our community. And then next year, we'll start the Future Ready Center for IT, and, you know, if the bomb were to pass, we'll probably start the, if the bomb were to pass, we will start the Future Ready Center for Trades, which is HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and energy. For parents to pick, you know, parents selecting schools, you know, choice is a big part of what we've been talking about internally. We have, I believe it was 23 Magnet schools. Those Magnet options are typically pretty popular with our parents. But to provide different kinds of educational models for parents, more so than we have in the past, education, I think, and probably more so 20 years ago and before that, was a little bit more kind of take it or leave it, you know, that we are who we are, and if you want to come, you know, come, and if you don't, you know, we're not going to change in order to fit different kinds of learners. I believe, you know, with technology and with COVID, we kind of accelerated that. We've adapted and changed some of that and tried to open up some opportunities for other ways to reach families and kids to work together. So that's the whole key, I think, and as you guys know, is hearing out our community, listening to community, and then trying to adapt and respond and meet the needs of whatever the future holds, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, just kind of popped in my head. We've done a number of partnerships together, including a shout-out to our Transit Department, helping to bus some kids where there are some gaps. I know in my district, when Jardine shut down, there was a couple of streets that kids would have to pass to get to me, so our Transit Department came through and helped bus a lot of those kids. What other partnerships do you see where we could help you guys out, that the city can help assist you guys in just day-to-day operations, safety of kids and whatnot?
Yeah, I think that, I'm glad you said that, and, you know, for the public awareness, there's way more collaborations that go on than most people probably realize. I think transportation's one, you know, I think I've met more than once with Chief Sullivan and Terry Moses, and we've sat down and talked about how do we strategize for, you know, not just youth crime, but youth violence? What can we do together? Who else can we engage? How can we be part of a partnership and a conversation together in order to help our kids to find peaceful ways to solve problems instead of violent ways to solve problems, right? I think we need that all up and down in our society, but especially for kids, if we can teach that young. So, you know, the Crime Commission, the number of officers that are, I mean, they come on calls, but they also come and eat lunch and, you know, do the other things with our kiddos all over the city. And I think too, you know, we have, we currently, last night, the board, our board just voted to surplus three buildings, Jardine, Clark, and Payne, and so we'll begin the process of looking for use on those, and I think that's another conversation, another way we can work together to talk about what might work, what may not work, and if the bond were to pass, you know, there'll be more conversations about other buildings too. So, you know, our stance, or my stance that I've communicated with the board is, you know, public assets where taxpayers have already spent dollars for a public asset, you know, it makes sense between public entities to work together, to whatever makes sense. And things don't always make sense, and that's part of why we talk and communicate and collaborate. So off the top of my head, I can't think of anything else, just being civically engaged, really. You know, all the volunteer opportunities we have with Reed to Succeed and United Way, collective impact with YMCA, just really, I say this all the time, our community wants our kids to do well. Like, I feel, I always feel a ton of support from our community. There is a lot of people that believe that it's the right thing to do to help Wichita Public School kids, and so we've got a ton of support, which is outstanding, so.
Yeah, there's a number of organizations out there doing the good work and trying to fill the space. EEP comes to mind off the top of my head, trying to get in there and teach kids about fentanyl and whatnot in schools. Violence Interrupters are working with some, especially the football games, trying to make sure that kids deal with some of their issues in a responsible way. So, yeah, shout-out to a number of the partners out there as well, just doing the work, good work, just trying to move our community forward.
Yep, that's right. It takes all of us.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Kelly. Really appreciate the opportunity to learn more about Wichita Public Schools, and we get often a lot of calls at the mayor's office about what can you do about curriculum, et cetera, and we have to remind community that we're separate entities, but we definitely are partners, and we appreciate that partnership, and so thank you for sharing this information today.
Well, thank you, guys. And I love your swivel podium here. I'm going to, I may look into getting us one of these. Thank you so much for the opportunity, so, thank you, guys.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Bill Anderson, Ceasefire in Palestine.
Good morning. I'm Bill Anderson. I live at 1227 Jefferson. I'm in Maggie Ballard's district. Last time I learned it, it only needs one of you to ask Legal to draft a ceasefire resolution, just one. So recently, I did a very cursory look at Gaza through Google. I have seven articles I'm going to call information from. I had one for each of you, and I'll save Mr. Glasscocks for next time. Hopefully, it won't be in next time. I just read what I learned from articles for each of you. This is for your consideration, Councilmember Tuttle. This is from the Washington Post article about a week ago. It's called Palestinians Describe a Massive Raid in Gaza. The Health Ministry in Gaza said at least 15 people were killed and 82 wounded in the operation in Khan Yunis that began early Wednesday. Seven women and 12 children as young as 22 months old were among those killed. Another 23, including two children, were killed in separate strikes across Gaza, according to local hospitals. The Israeli military did not immediately respond to a local hospitals. The Israeli military did not immediately respond to a request for comment. Residents said Israel had carried out heavy airstrikes as its ground forces staged an incursion into three neighborhoods in Khan Yunis. A man whose name I cannot pronounce, who had four relatives among those kills, described heavy destruction and said first responders had struggled to reach destroyed homes. This is his quote. "The explosions and shelling were massive," he told the Associated Press. "Many people are thought to be under the rubble and no one can retrieve them." That's for your consideration. Next, Councilmember Johnson. This is from NBC of last March. "People in Gaza have been 'totally dehumanized,' deprived of their dignity and their human well-being," said one woman, Palestinian, quote, "let alone the fact that they have lost all their property, their homes, and in many cases, their family members." She shares the view of many Palestinians that the war is not about Hamas at all, but rather about what they see as a thinly veiled, decades-long desire by the Israeli government to push them out of Gaza and repopulate it with Israelis." This, for Councilmember Ballard. This is from CNN, again, last March. "A growing number of children in Gaza are dying of starvation and dehydration, according to the World Health Organization. A WHO team found, quote, 'severe levels of malnutrition, children dying of starvation, serious shortages of food, fuel, and medical supplies, hospital buildings destroyed during a recent visit to two hospitals in northern Gaza.' Doctors in one hospital, quote, "fear for the lives of six children suffering from malnutrition and diarrhea in intensive care as a result of the cessation of the electric generator and oxygen and the weakness of medical capabilities," a doctor, a ministry spokesman in Gaza said in a statement. I'm sorry, I'm reading it very poorly, but bear with me. Next, from Mayor Wu. This is from an article from the UN High Office, High Commissioner's Office in July. "The recent deaths of more Palestinian children due to hunger and malnutrition leaves no doubt that famine has spread across the entire Gaza Strip," a group of independent experts said today. "With the death of these children from starvation despite medical treatment in central Gaza, there is no doubt that famine has spread from northern Gaza into central and southern Gaza." The experts said the health of a child from malnutrition and dehydration indicates that health and social structures have been attacked and are critically weakened. "When the first child dies from malnutrition and dehydration, it becomes irrefutable that famine has taken hold," the experts said. Let me see, that's a tough one. Mr. Johnson, this is for you. This is from ABC Australia. This was in August. I got 17 seconds, god damn it. "An organization, Save the Children, says children are nearly seven times more likely to die from blast injuries than adults because they are more vulnerable and sensitive. Their skulls are not fully formed and their undeveloped muscles offer less protection. So a blast is more likely to tear apart organs in their abdomen even when there's no visual damage," says Save the Children's director for the occupied Palestinian territory, Jason Lee.
Mr. Anderson, your five minutes has elapsed.
Thank you very much. There's more. There is more. And it's horrible. And I didn't just grab a whole bunch of crap and put it in here. This is just stuff, anybody can Google this. It's happening. Takes one of you?
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill. Could you go ahead and, what info from an article did you have for me, sir?
Oh, let me see. And it just happened to fall where you are. Gaza's Crisis of Child Amputees. The Crisis of Childs Amputees. Israel's War Has Particularly Impacted Children. In addition to the more than 14,000 killed UNICEF estimated in January, that around 1,000 children have lost one or both of their legs, equivalent to 10 children losing a limb every day in Israeli bombardment. Earlier this year, a London-based doctor, and again, I can't pronounce his name, said that Gaza was witnessing, quote, "the biggest cohort of pediatric amputees in history," with the surgeon performing up to six amputations a day while working in the besieged territory for 43 days. London-based charity Save the Children says that Palestinian children injured by Israelis' explosive weapons are suffering, quote, "unimaginable physical and mental harm." Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Bill, you are right. It does take one person to ask staff to start work on a resolution. It would take four of us to approve it. I will tell you, there has been some conversation about that, and a resolution was being looked at. I said this to a journalist, based on the conversation at the bench, it didn't seem like there was four votes. And personally, for me, given all the atrocities we've seen, I would hate to see a simple call for a ceasefire not receive four votes and what message that would send. So I did not push for it to continue, personally, not speaking for everybody else. If it did come up, like I said before, I would vote for it. But I would hate to see just a simple push for a ceasefire and to stop the killing that we've seen. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have four spots left. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does anyone from the public?
My name is Doug Ballard. I live in Riverside, District 6. I'm going to piggyback on what Bill's asking for. This is really simple. Bill and I, in particular, protested wars for over 50 years. All of them stupid so far. And that's why we've come down here. I haven't spoke before, but here's the story that you may not know. It is against international law to kill civilians in time of war, accidentally or on purpose. It's against the law. And we all know, regardless of what your political affiliation is, your philosophy, we all know this is going on. So we're simply asking you to ask, stop the shooting. Gaza, that's what we're really talking about. Gaza is actually slightly smaller than Wichita, Kansas. Wichita is somewhere around 161, 161, 162 square miles. Gaza is 140. Yet, it has the population of Nebraska living in it. There is no way to have any kind of a strategic strike unless you've got a 22 rifle with what's going on there. So we are simply asking, stop the shooting. If you guys were teachers and you ran upon a couple of boys fighting in the hallway, the first thing you would do is you would stop the fighting. You wouldn't negotiate with them while they're rolling around in the hallway. You would stop the fighting. So Bill and I, because we're old, not because we have any credentials, this stuff has a tendency to escalate. And it could completely change what you guys are doing up there. We could be at war big time. This is a very volatile part of the world. It has nothing to do with religion. It has nothing to do with ethnicity. We just simply want the shooting to stop. And that's all we're asking for. And I know you guys well enough to know that you don't think this is okay. We're this far away from something really ugly. So it's not what's getting reported, it's what's not getting reported. So however bad you think it is, it's actually worse. So I read last night, to put Gaza back together could take 60 to 80 years. That's a lot of, that's a lot, and probably will never happen. But we need to stop what's going on right now before, I hope, a lot of other things start happening. So anyway, we're just asking for a resolution to ceasefire. There's got to be four votes up there. Thank you.
We have three spots left. Does anyone else from the public like to speak?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Denise Fleming. I work for Kansas Family Advisory Network. We used to be located downtown at the 33 Northeast English Building, but now we're at 917 South Glendale. And I just wanted to come today to share with you all that KFAN has been a good, kept secret, and we no longer want to be a secret. When we were downtown, we fed the homelessness, we clothed the homelessness, we gave blankets to them, we made sure they had hot meals on Wednesdays. But now that we're in the 67218 area, and who's my councilman?
Hi.
I'm Denise, you can call me Nisi. Pleased to meet you. We really want to make a difference in where we're at. This is our community, this is our future, and this is our neighborhood. And we just want to make sure that at our office, we have a clothing bank, we have a clothes closet, excuse me, and we have a resource bank where we provide food to our neighbors and make sure that they can come there twice a week to get a meal. We try to feed them for two days. We're looking to try to do more with the holidays coming up. We want to make sure all of our community has a Thanksgiving dinner basket prepared with everything. And we also want to make sure that they have a Christmas dinner and provide gifts for those children and families. So they're not taking their bill money trying to provide for those kids, but we are providing those resources for them. And with that being said, I have brought, and I apologize, I don't have one for everybody, but I do have one for you all, in these bags. And I'm asking you to invest in our neighborhood as we invest in our community, one for each other. Because I don't want to leave my grandkids behind, I don't want to leave my children behind, and I don't want to leave my community behind. So is it okay if I approach you guys? In this bag is mine. Please remember, our new address is 917 South Glendale, we're right beside Dollar General. And I would like for each of you to come see us, and I'm petitioning you to invest in our efforts as well, to give them their full hours of time, and if you need to, feel welcome to give them all the time they're on, to put that all, people, we can do, that, my, children, and our neighbors, we can, 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 but we want to do more because a lot of times, we got babies going to school, and if they're hungry, they're not having a successful day at school. They're not successful at school because they're hungry, their behaviors are more out of control, their tolerance is less. So we want to really be able to be an impact to our neighbors and our friends in the 67218 district. But all of you all, we want you to help us too, because we really want to make sure our families eat. Thank you for hearing me. You all have a blessed morning.
Thank you, Denise.
If you have any questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Fleming. I have your information here. I will be reaching out to you to set up something, stop by, and we can talk about how to best serve our community. And welcome to District 3, welcome to South Wichita. I know you guys have been doing work here for quite some time, but it's good to have you physically in our district.
Thank you. And just in closing, please remember, we're at KFAN, recognize, there's no perfect family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak? I see none. I'll bring it back and ask, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items 1 through 17.
Are there items to be pulled? I ask for item number six to be pulled. I motion to approve consent agenda items without number six. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Item number six, I believe, is Sally. Can you please tell us a little bit more about the Project Hope strategy and how you're measuring the success of this program?
Sure. Project Hope is a Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Grant that was applied. It was a joint application from the Housing Department and Wichita Police Department, as well as partnering with many community organizations and Newman University as our program evaluator. It was an opportunity to apply for a million-dollar grant for three years to make an impact related to crime statistics in a target area. So project, Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Grants have to be community-based, in a specific area, data-driven, and build trust and capacity with partners. And so we have a one-and-a-half-square-mile target area bounded by 10th on the north, down to Kellogg to the south, Waco to the west, to St. Francis to the east. And we had worked with WPD to identify that we were seeing more than three times the number of calls for services and crimes related to homelessness in the target area. And we hypothesized that if we were able to move as many people as we could into housing that were experiencing homelessness, we'd see a decrease in those crime rates. And so we work hand-in-hand. We have hired care coordination teams, two of them. This project has changed since its first inception through community outreach and education. And we have two outreach teams that include a caseworker, a social work intern student from either Newman University or WSU, a peer support worker contracted with Breakthrough, so those are folks with lived experience. And they go out and they try and engage folks in our target area and connect them to housing and other resources. We had about a two-year, year-and-a-half delay because of COVID. And so we've had two one-year extensions on the grant, which now expire at the end of September 2025. And so once our site plan was approved by the Department of Justice, we were able to employ those care teams and work collaboratively within the community. In addition, there's a component of the grant around partnerships and trust building that is the Neighbor Resource Fairs that most of you have attended. Once a month, we bring partners together to provide services and make connections to people experiencing homelessness. And then we have a public education campaign that is focused on, right now focused on educating the general public on the lived experience of being homeless, not just in our community, but in all communities. And so those activities are going on as well. We evaluate the crime statistics monthly with WPD. We often deploy resources when we see an uptick of calls for service and try to figure out how to diffuse those. So for an example, for several months, we saw an uptick in the number of calls coming from the area of Second and Topeka. We worked hand-in-hand with WPD, deployed resources to find that a change in staff and policy at United Methodist Open Door was resulting in an uptick in the calls for service from WPD. And so the homeless outreach team worked with the staff at Open Door to train them in how to address people in different circumstances. And almost immediately, we saw a decrease in the number of calls for services at that location. So that's just an example. The following month, we saw an uptick at the SAC and Calm Care Office. And the same day we were evaluating the data, put in a message to Calm Care who said, yes, please, let's talk next week. How can we reduce the times we're having to call for WPD assistance? So we'll continue to evaluate that data on the macro level. But we've also, now that we've had people that have been housed for more than a year, we've housed 45 individuals, and only one of them so far has lost their housing due to intensive case management. We're able to look at the micro level, and we're looking at those 44 individuals, and we're evaluating their interactions with law enforcement before interacting with the Project Hope teams and during, and eventually we'll be looking at after. So we've seen some really great data, some great collaborations come out of Project Hope.
You said that 45 individuals have been housed in those situations. You said that 45 individuals have been housed in those situations. Were these chronically homeless individuals, then?
The majority of folks, yes. Were chronically homeless for more than a year.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you describe how you keep track of some of the statistics or gather some of the data? Is it, do we have federal assistance in looking at the data and kind of parsing through it?
So part of the grant does pay for data evaluation. We have a contract with Newman University, who are the data leads, but they work hand in hand with the crime analyst with Wichita Police Department. But we're looking at not just the crime statistics. We also use the Homeless Management Information System to be tracking data and information, as well as have monthly team meetings on deploying the resources and quarterly meetings with the Leadership Council.
Okay. How often do you guys have the resource fairs?
Resource fairs are once a month, with the exception of the coldest months, in which we were working with providers to rally where emergency shelter was. Also, the resource fairs are held outside. And so January, December, January, February are a little bit challenging to do an outdoor event. But every other month of the year. This year, it was the first year we did combine the September Resource Fair with the VA Stand Down, rather than having two competing events came together to bring all those partners, even further bringing partners together.
I've been to a couple of them, and they're pretty resourceful, I guess, maybe. Plenty of opportunities to help people there, get just basic healthcare needs, get their hair cut, some grooming. So I appreciate all the work that you guys do with that. There's not going to be a large overlap, I guess. Maybe once we get the MAC up and running next spring, there's going to be maybe six months overlap. How are you guys going to work with the MAC to help get people housed and into the services that they need?
Where we've been doing Neighbor Resource Fairs, we expect to happen actually at the MAC. And many of those providers are going to be present there all the time, but we'll have others that come to the Resource Fair, like haircuts and things that don't have a permanent or regular schedule at the MAC. We would be hosting dates there to bring additional resources in that aren't there every day. So the other side effect we saw with the Resource Fair, which was really interesting and heartwarming to watch, was the connections that different providers were making that they weren't having before. Often, you know, people who hadn't worked together all of a sudden came together for the Resource Fair and were like, "Well, I'm doing this, and you're doing this, and how can we have bigger impact working together?" And so that's been really wonderful to watch.
And I assume that a lot of the experience and data you're cleaning from this, Project Hope is going in to inform how we're going to run the MAC better and reach out to the community better.
Correct. And the next two Neighbor Resource Fairs are actually being held in the parking lot at Breakthrough Club, which is right across the street from Park Elementary. Very deliberately kind of moving that resource closer to where the permanent resource is going to be.
All right. Thank you.
Sally, you mentioned public information campaign is also part of this project plan. And since you mentioned this is a very targeted area, basically downtown, 10th to Kellogg, wanted to know the scope of the documentary. Is that intended for that area or beyond that? So what is the purpose of the film, the cost of the film, and the timeline?
Sure. The film, although it is funded by both Project Hope and HomeARP, is not a film about Project Hope. It is really a documentary about homelessness and the real experiences of being homeless in our community. And so it is not kept within the boundaries of Project Hope. It has been about a year that we've been working. This has been very interesting for me, not an area I would have ever expected in my career. But we're working collaboratively with Shocker Studios, and they've been, and you've probably seen them, filming for about a year. We have about 80 hours worth of footage. And it is actually a school class that is covering two semesters, where this is their assignment, is to create not just this feature-length documentary, but we'll also be receiving what they call shorts, which could be two to 10-minute videos on particular topics, again, around educating around homelessness. So it's been really exciting to work with the kids, I call them kids, young adults, and seeing how much they're vested in this project. And so the documentary is going to be featured at the Tall Grass Film Festival on October 24th, and I encourage anybody to come out and take a look. Because this is considered a community project with the partnership with Shocker Studios, the Tall Grass feature is really an opportunity to receive feedback, so that the students can learn what could be adjusted in the final version of the film before any further release. We control the documentary. We will make all decisions about how it could be further released in the future. But that's very exciting for us. They'll come back, do any additional edits to turn over a final vernish and for us to handle going forward. The entire public education campaign, the outreach, the public meetings, and the production of the videos, it's about $79,000 funded, both from the Project Hope DOJ grant and the HUD HomeARP grant. So all of the funding for the documentary and all other public education campaign documents is grant-funded.
Thank you very much, Sally.
You're welcome.
And for this specific item, it is just for the two contractors? Is that correct?
Correct. Because we had an extension on the timeframe from DOJ, we needed to extend the contracts, one for the grant coordination, the other for the peer coordinators that work with the care teams.
I appreciate. I know Angelina's here with Project Hope and the folks at Breakthrough. I appreciate the collaboration and really looking forward to when the emergency winter shelter opens up on November 28th and the collaboration that can happen already with Project Hope and the continuum of care with United Way of the Plains. So I see much more collaboration and really appreciate the steps of moving forward with this multi-agency center. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve consent agenda item number 6.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated October 7, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Laubert, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, October 7, for the following items. For engineering, we have the waterline extension in West Street Emerald Bay Estate Edition to Pine Way Edition. For NOAC Construction Company Incorporated, for an aggregate total of $528,320.50, subject to your approval of a new budget authorization and revised engineer estimates. We have the waterline cross connection at 31st Street South and Oliver for Utility Maintenance Contractors LLC in the amount of $108,950. We have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer, and stormwater drain to serve Bridger at Central Edition. For NOAC Construction Company Incorporated, for an aggregate total of $2,182,957.50 for Group 3's negotiated engineer's estimate. We have the light fixtures and poles for River Corridor for Lender and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $433,000. And for purchasing, we have the trash and recycling containers and collections for our library, transit, and police locations for Waste Management of Kansas Incorporated in an aggregate monthly total of $2,854. We have one Caterpillar Model M318 wheeled excavator for Foley Industries Incorporated in the amount of $439,694.91. We have the spectometry equipment service agreement for Agilent Technologies Incorporated for an aggregate five-year total of $188,640. We have the generator preventative maintenance service agreement for Foley Industries Incorporated for an aggregate three-year total of $68,686.92. We have the personnel budgeting software, years 1 through 5, for ClearGov Incorporated for an aggregate five-year total of $218,503.60. We have the Planet Capital Planning CIP software for Planet Software LLC for an aggregate five-year total of $69,804.30. We have the West Link Library Network and Data Cabling for Vision Communications Kansas Incorporated for an aggregate total of $109,125. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open public opportunities out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and I recommend your approval.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Josh. Can we go back to slide 11?
Sure.
Now, the two low bids down there, non-responsive, was that they didn't meet our specs, and we reached out to them to expand and just didn't get any response from them.
Yeah, great question, Councilman Hoheisel. The way that the bid was written and the specifications that were written, two vendors did not respond to what was requested. Paul, can you speak to specifically the items that were in contention?
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. Yes, I can. Councilmember Hoheisel, stand. You're a wholesale electric company. They did not provide a bid for 20... There were two groups, 27 poles and two poles, and they did not provide a bid on those poles. So, and then Next Gen Clean Energy Solutions, they had provided a bid for solar power lighting, which might be a good product in the future. However, for this project, we are trying to match the poles that have been installed adjacent to this in front of River Vista. They're concrete poles. Their product was a cylindrical solar array, kind of like, just lack of better terms, a pool noodle that would wrap around the poles. It was black. But it wasn't a product that we thought would be comparable to what we had bid, because it wouldn't match existing poles. I did talk to them. And the other item they had were some light bollards that they had provided, rectangular light bollards, and our specifications were for round light bollards. I did talk to them. We traded emails back and forth. Again, we'll probably look at their product for future projects. However, it just did not fit this one.
Okay, that one sounds interesting.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Josh. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations again to you and your team. And truly, your heartfelt words were some of the best that I've heard. The way you acknowledged and recognized your team was not lost on me. So congratulations again, and thank you for being part of the city of Wichita.
Thank you so much.
I see no further questions. I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts for October 7, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0 with one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, I have a few petitions for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Ballman Fifth Edition, located in District 4. The project will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer will also construct the improvements under private contract. To comply with state statute regarding the use of special assessment funding, the city must acquire their completed projects. Corporate Hills Edition, located in District 2. The project will provide water and sanitary sewer improvements required for new commercial development. The developer will also construct the improvements under private contract. Again, to comply with state statute regarding the use of special assessment funding, the city must acquire their completed projects. And Dugan West Commercial Fourth Edition, located in District 4. The project will provide water, drainage, sewer, and paving improvements required for a new commercial development. The developer will also construct the improvements under private contract. And again, to comply with state statute regarding the use of special assessment funding, the city must acquire the completed projects. Continued on additional paving for additional phases for Dugan West, Kellogg. And it is recommended that the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amended resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. I motion to approve the petition for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0 with one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Ordinances relating to titles 1, 4, and 5.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Jan Jarman with the Law Department. And also with me is Captain Thornton with Wichita Police Department, the Special Investigations. The fellow here in the lavender. Today, I'm here to talk to you about a suggested ordinance we have regarding three different issues. This really, the whole package came before you because of an issue regarding the prosecution of tickets regarding Title IV alcohol. So that would be clubs that are serving minors, or even minors they catch at clubs, who shouldn't be there. Those are really enforced by two different groups of people. Wichita Police Department enforces Title IV violations, but also you have the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Control for the State of Kansas. And they don't do Title IV, but they do State of Kansas statutes. But those mirror city ordinances. Right now, if ABC wants to prosecute a case that happens in a City of Wichita club, they have to take that case to the District Attorney's Office, and that has to go through District Court. That is very burdensome. It takes a very long time to go through their system compared to municipal court. And they're very understaffed at the District Attorney's Office, so it's hard to get those cases through. Yet, we at the City of Wichita use those convictions against clubs. And it's actually harder for us in the City of Wichita to track those types of cases when they're going through the District Attorney's Office versus when they're going through our own court system. They're just easier to track when we can keep an eye on them here. So that's why ABC came to us and said, "Hey, is there any way we can take our cases through your municipal court?" We could do this without an ordinance, but it would create a lot of duplication. We would have to have a WPD officer track with the ABC. They would have to create a whole new case number. The WPD would have to keep their own evidence, have to take ABC's evidence, and it just creates a lot of duplication that would be unnecessary. Instead, it would be easier if you all would allow ABC on Title IV violations only. We're not talking about all ordinances. But if we could allow ABC commissioned law enforcement officers to charge cases in the City of Wichita. So that's why we're here. While we're here, we like to clean things up. And we found in Title 1, I know it's completely unrelated, but we found in Title 1 that we still refer to the Supervisor of Central Inspections. So we thought we would clean up some of that language and put in its place M-A-B-C-D. And also, as you all know, Title 5, some time ago, the Kansas Supreme Court deemed our disorderly conduct state statute and therefore our city ordinance, because we mirror state statute, to be unconstitutional in the use of the word noisy conduct. So while I'm cleaning some things up, I thought we'd go ahead and clean that up as well. So as far as the analysis goes, the Title 1 amendment's really easy. We're asking you to take out central inspections and put in its place M-A-B-C-D. On Title 5, we're asking you to remove noisy conduct as a violation of disorderly conduct. A person can still be charged with a noise ordinance violation. Don't worry, that's not gone. It's just not going to be part of a disorderly conduct. Instead, it would be under Title 7, and it would be a noise violation. But most of the meat and potatoes here has to do with this Title IV amendment, which would allow a commissioned law enforcement officer to write a complaint, which... in Wichita Municipal Court. It only applies to Title IV violations, which are alcohol violations. It does require an agreement between the two organizations, so we're not going to let everybody just come in and charge, you know, without permission to be here. So, there would need to be some kind of formal letter inviting them to write tickets in municipal court. It only authorizes notices to appear. It does not authorize an arrest on our behalf, so if ABC catches someone with alcohol or catches a club in violation, they would write a ticket and a notice to appear, and then that person would have to come to court. ABC, I spoke with them. They estimate there'd be about 25 to 30 cases is what they're running right now. And just so you all know, that if ABC writes a case in Wichita Municipal Court, the, it's not a moneymaker. No case is a moneymaker. The public thinks that sometimes, but you're always running at a loss because it does cost more to have a prosecutor and a judge than you ever bring in on a case. But I will say that adding these 25 to 30 cases would not increase the need at all for any additional prosecutors. It would not increase the need for any judges. Our case, it would go on a criminal docket, which has actually plenty of room to hear additional cases, especially after we stopped hearing marijuana and small drug cases. So, there's plenty of room to do that. And we get to keep the fines. So, and these are fines that will be collected because businesses that get charged, they would lose their license if they didn't pay their fines, if they were convicted. So, the fines and the court costs would go to the City of Wichita. ABC's not asking for anything other than the ability to run their cases through our court so they can hold people accountable and hold clubs accountable. So, based on that, we're just asking that you adopt the proposed ordinances. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Jan. Are there any questions for staff? I have just one. Is this a best practice? I know that it was mentioned that it was due to overcrowding at the District Court to bring it into the municipal court, so the City of Wichita. Is this a best practice?
It would fall in line with everything else, that we are the misdemeanor court for the, for the City of Wichita. District Attorney's Office always has first dibs on any case they want, even a misdemeanor, but it does follow in line with the rest of City of Wichita cases that are misdemeanors do go through municipal court. They generally don't go through District Court.
And I think you answered the question earlier, but any costs to the municipal courts would be minimal to negligible. Is that correct?
Correct. It would, I don't, it would take no additional staffing to do this.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. I will now open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will motion to approve the placement of this ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six, zero, with one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Design funding for multiple capital improvement program projects, District Two, Five, and Six.
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, the item before you is design funding for multiple capital improvement program projects. The adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes multiple projects that are identified to begin design in 2025. Projects include 127th Street East from Douglas to 13th Street North, 21st Street North from St. Teresa Street to 119th Street West, Webb Road from Central to 13th Street North, and the First Street Bridge over our Kansas River. Going into a little bit more detail about these projects. This is a aerial map showing the project limits for 127th Street between Douglas and 13th Street. This project, the current roadway varies from five lanes to two lanes. It is five lanes just south of 13th Street. At the intersection, narrowing down to two lanes, down to just north of Central where they're going over the Kansas Turnpike at the bridge. South of there, it's five lanes at the intersection, again, at Central, then reduces down to three lanes down towards the I-135 ramps, south of Central, the on-off ramps, and then it's two lanes south of Douglas. We will have the consultant look at a three-lane facility with on-street bike lanes that is similar to what has been improved on 127th Street North or 13th Street, and we will also make connections there, north of Central, to the K-96 bike path as well. There are multiple new and redeveloped properties along this corridor, especially down south towards Central and south of KTA towards Douglas Street. Going out west, 21st Street North from 119th Street to St. Teresa. As you recall, this section of roadway was converted from a two-lane roadway to a three-lane roadway overlay last year. We did restripe it with the bike lanes on the outside shoulders. We will have the consultant look at a three- or five-lane facility with bicycles and pedestrian upgrades. And there is, has been currently new developments at 135th Street, as well as 151st Street, south of 21st Street, and the YMCA there, west of 135th Street, had also constructed some new playing field south of 21st Street. There at the Cowskin Creek, Sedge County has a project to reconstruct that or make improvements to that bridge, to replace that existing bridge. So, we will work with Sedge County, partner with them as well on this project. Webb Road, Central to 13th Street. We would ask that currently is a four-lane roadway. We have improvements at 13th Street and Central that we would tie into where they have left turn lanes. We will look at, part of this section has curb. Other parts is just open ditches. We have had requests for sidewalk in this area due to the two schools with Collegiate and Minnehaw Elementary, just north of Central. So, we would construct sidewalk with that. It's much easier to construct sidewalk when you have curb and gutter in lieu of the ditches, and we would look at possible five-lane through part of the corridor, and then narrow down to four lanes if there's not a lot of driver approaches. So, again, we will ask the consultant to look at both of those options. And then the last one is First Street Bridge over the our Kansas River, just west of downtown. We would have a consultant either look at rehabilitating the existing bridge or reconstructing the bridge. We have some sidewalk and delamination that are occurring, and we would also look at, you know, have the consultant look at rightsizing that street and maybe including some on-street bicycle facilities. The requested budget for your design and project management is listed below for each project. 127th Street from Douglas to 13th Street, $700,000. 21st Street North from St. Teresa to 119th Street West, $1.2 million. And Webb Road, Central to 13th Street North, $750,000. And the First Street Bridge over our Kansas River, $1.5 million, all funded by local sales tax. I will return. Pending approval today, all of the projects will be returned to City Council at a later date for approval, approval of final design concepts and construction budgets. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council approve the budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff?
I just had a couple of questions. First, the project on the First Street Bridge, are you working in collaboration with Exploration Place? Is that is going to be the new playscape area?
We would, you know, we, we have considered that. We'll write that into the scope of services as we do that, you know, connecting the, the existing bike lanes and sidewalk in that area. So, currently, First Street in this area has some on-street bike lanes. We want to see if there's additional room for that, but we will look at all of that during, during the design phase, yes.
I know that streets is one of the top two priorities of the city. Can you talk about how these four projects were selected versus others? And a separate question about the OP-3 program, so people understand the intentional types of improvements we make in the city?
Okay. Let me answer the first question. We do look at, and we work with City Council members, as well as we look at the existing roadways throughout the city. Again, we've had some sidewalk requests through a couple of these corridors, namely on 127th Street, as well as Reb, Webb Road. They both have open ditches, and again, it's difficult to construct sidewalk on streets with open ditches on which side. You don't want to put it next to the roadway, but you want to get the separation so it'd be on the other side of the ditch and then you have to cross it. We look at traffic volumes. We look at crash rates and, and development in the area. So, those are projects that we look, and again, you know, work with the City Council on program, the capital improvement program. And to follow up with the Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, we are identifying the 2025 locations at this time. We are finalizing those. We have been working here recently in the last week or so. I've had some conversation, our engineering has some conversation with our maintenance folks, and we wanted to make sure that what we have on the 2025 OP-3 list does not conflict with what we might have on upcoming CIP projects, so we don't have that overlap. So, we are finalizing that now, and then once we have that finalized, I will prob, we will bring that to City Council most likely in November. And then once that's approved, a link will be posted on the wichita.gov website under Public Works, Streets, and Outsource Pavement, so.
Thank you, Paul. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no one from the public who would like to speak. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Paul. As we look at these projects, I just want to encourage us to look at the, you know, public design of it, add in some other elements to kind of spruce it up, make it cool. The work that we did on Douglas a few years ago, one of those examples, the fence that was along the bridge, we made that a green color and put some other, like, leaf-like elements in there, just something to spruce it up a bit.
I see no further comments. I will motion to approve the budgets, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six, zero, with one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Supplemental design agreement number two for riverbank improvements, District Four.
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, the item before you is funding and.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak? We'll bring it back to the bench. Really appreciate the thoughtful conversation regarding water conservation and also probably some native grasses and native landscape moving forward with a lot of our designs. We like, obviously, having beautiful landscaping, but if we can be cognizant of that water conservation, even if we get tons and tons of rain, I think moving forward would be a very responsible move for the City of Wichita. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have to plug it in. That's a great place for a zip line.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Councilmember Tuttle said my, my piece there. That, that Ferris wheel needs to come in at some point, right?
This resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take staff's recommended action, that the City Council approves supplemental design agreement number one and authorize the necessary signatures. Oh, I'm sorry. Supplemental design agreement number two.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six, zero, with one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Air Pavements, Colonel James Jabara Airport.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jesse Romo, Director of Airports, Wichita Airport Authority. Here to talk about another great project and opportunity. This one is to add some scope, or excuse me, some scale, not scope, to the project and looking to get some approval on a change order. So, as background, in 2023, Wichita State University Tech and WAA partnered to obtain a grant from the State Department of Commerce. It's the Aloft Grant Program to design and construct airfield pavement to support growth of their aviation workforce programs. The project is fully reimbursed by that grant, and from, the matching funds come from WSU Tech. Airport Authority staff has been coordinating the design of this project with WSU Tech staff to ensure the final product reflects their needs and meets the intent of the grant program. And on August 9th, we received some very favorable bids, and that puts us in a position to add a little bit more work to the project to fully utilize the grant funding. The expanded pavement will support a larger fleet of aircraft and supports future development of a maintenance hangar. To that end, a change order for additional work with Pearson Construction and a supplemental agreement with Garver for related services has been prepared. This is a picture of the project, and what we're looking at, at, on your left, that kind of goes diagonal, that is Webb Road. To the north of the gray paved area is where WSU Tech currently resides at the National Center for Aviation Training Campus. The project started with, what we bid on was all the gray area, and the blue of that apron area represents the expansion and additional things we get to do. When we're talking about hangar development with WSU Tech, there are two different hangars that they may be looking to do. And just as a side note, we are negotiating a separate development agreement with them and a developer for that project of the development side of this. That will be brought forward to you later. This one is just the infrastructure side of things. But if we expand out the apron, it allows them an opportunity to build two hangars on each side, including a maintenance hangar. But in order to fully develop that entire site, it also, it requires us to improve the drainage and erosion, which means some improvements to the channel, and that's what you see there in the green bar that's below. So, portions of that channel are paved, some are not currently, and so we've been working on doing that, which helps pave the way, so to speak, for future development. The cost of the change order is 753,000, which brings the total contract with Pearson to 2.2 million, approximately. The cost of the supplemental agreement is 327,000. The total contract with Garver is 537,000. The current approved budget includes funds to cover these expenses. The project is reimbursed by the Aloft Grant and resources from WSU Tech. Therefore, it is recommended that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the change order and a supplemental agreement and authorize necessary signatures. I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. In an abundance of caution, I am going to abstain from this vote due to a potential conflict of interest.
I will motion to approve the change order and the supplemental agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes five, zero, with one abstention and one absent. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Councilmember Tuttle. Vice Mayor Ballard. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Tracy Terrell to the Affordable Housing Board.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Cara Billy to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board.
And I would like to appoint Detective Jeremy Diaz to the Police and Fire Board. I motion to approve this list of board appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six zero with one absent. We'll now have Councilmember comments. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Parks and Rec and Public Works for cleaning up after our river cleanup immediately, just so none of our hard work was undone. So a big thank you to them, and also thank you to all of the people that helped save the day at the Fiesta when we had a mini crisis. So Parks, Ben Hutton, Levi, Public Works, the electricians, everybody came to save the day. So I'm glad that we got all that worked out, and it was a great turnout. So thanks for everyone that was able to come.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the community that this Sunday is one of my favorite days of the whole year. It is Open Streets ICT from noon to five, and we first started this program in 2017. We did take a break during COVID, so this is our seventh annual Open Streets ICT. We're doing it a little bit different this year, it's going to be in October and not September, and so we'll have pink shirts because it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but just a great time to come down for fellowship. You know, our roads and streets were created originally for pedestrians and for bikes and for horses, and now we see, we see vehicles, but for one day, we get to all play on Douglas Street, and there'll be vendors and activities, so I just hope the community will come and enjoy, and the weather's supposed to be perfect.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give a shout out to everybody who put on the firefighter memorial on Sunday. It's always a somber event. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it this year because of illness, but they did unveil some preliminary plans to make Lincoln Park the State Firefighter Memorial. So we're working with our colleagues on, in the state legislature right now to hopefully move this project along, and if everything goes right at next year's ceremony, we will be able to unveil the beginnings of the State Firefighter Memorial being at Lincoln Park on South Broadway. So a lot of news coming along with that, and I'm hoping to keep pushing this project along, and special thank you to our Parks Department and our Communications Department, as well as our Fire Department and Fire Union for help spearhead, spearheading this initiative. So thank you guys for the, the great event, and thank you guys for pushing along for the State Firefighter Memorial.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. For those who didn't see, we cut the ribbon on the Wichita Water Works facility last week. Just want to shout out everyone on the city side, and all the work that everyone did from Public Works and folks who are no longer here with the city anymore, but it was just incredible to be able to cut the ribbon on an amazing facility, our largest public investment in the city's history, ensuring clean water access for generations to come, and thinking about that was pretty awesome. So just wanted to shout out everyone on the city side who helped make that happen in collaboration and working with our federal partners and everyone else.
Thank you, Councilmembers and Vice Mayor. I will just plug again that this weekend is going to be packed with community events, and we really do encourage our community to come out, whether it's the Wichita Asian Festival on Saturday, the Prairie Fire Marathon, where people from all across the nation come to Wichita to run, including some of the council here who will be running slash jogging, maybe, and walking. Come on, we're going to walk for the 5K within the Prairie Fire Marathon, and then Open Streets. I just want to give a big shout out to Councilmember Tuttle. She was one of the founders of Open Streets ICT, and it is a great event. This is now the third of the ones in 2024, and look forward to many more in 2025. Councilmember Hoheisel.
I believe what they classify what I do as chugging, not jogging or running or anything like that, just chugging along.
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. We motion to adjourn four to one. Is that Councilmember Johnson? Okay.
Of course.